Welcome to the East Bridgewater School Committee Public Hearing on the FY21 School Department Budget, this is February 4th, 2020. At this time, I take a motion to open the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trista, second by Gordon. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. I'd like to thank the administrative team for all of your hard work in putting this budget presentation together, and thank you to the Budget Subcommittee for your time and effort, thank you to the town for your support, and lastly, thank you to EB Cam for always televising and recording our meetings. There will be time at the end for questions as soon as the presentation is over, and at this time, I'm going to hand the meeting over to Superintendent Legault, and we're all going to go sit down in the audience.
Good evening. I want to first thank you for coming this evening. I can see it's a huge crowd. I know that this is very important, though. It is our school committee night to hear the budget presentation, but we do need to have as many people from our community involved in this important vote as you go into this next week, and I asked the school committee this evening to ask as many questions as they have. We do have a Budget Subcommittee. They have been with us for the last few weeks as we moved into getting, or the last couple of months, getting to this point. We have been meeting with Mr. Noble, the Town Administrator. Throughout this process, we go back and forth, we work very closely with the town. We know that we're a piece of the pie, we know that we're part of the community, and we certainly, we are committed to the community. We are pre-K through 12 school system. We're doing very well. I will add, though, at this time, that we are still in mediation with the EBEA. We do not have a current contract right now, we are working on that. I do feel thankful that we have a good conversation going. I hope to have this wrapped up by the, at some point this year, and hopefully, we can move forward together as we go into the F21 school budget. So I want to thank John Shea, Business Administrator, did a lot of work, a lot of figuring for us, a lot of time going back and forth as up with the Town Administrator. I want to thank Dr. Gina Williams, working a lot with professional development and curriculum instruction, working with the principals on what the needs, what the supports, what our commitment is to the teachers and the supports for their classroom, and what needs to happen throughout the community with talking to our parents and getting programs that they need and supports for their children as they go through our pre-K through 12 system. It is truly great to be a Viking. Each year, as we start the year, we look at our strategic plan every year. Do you have, I don't have the clicker. You can go to the next slide, please. So, this is how we develop our budget, this is how our teachers, our principals develop their school improvement plans, this is how we drive our school budget, and this is how the principals and myself, and Dr. Williams, and John Shea, and John Phelan, Director of Special Education, this is how we drive the budget. These are our four pillars: our curriculum instruction, our social-emotional wellness, our professional development, and the technology of the district. Where we are today, our current salary is $17,699,604. Non-salary is $3,180,291. Our total school budget is $20,879,895. Our busing is $912,600, which is a total of $21,792,495. That is this current year's budget, this is fiscal year '20, that's what we are using this year to support the needs of the district. This is on the Department of Education's website. This is our District of School Enrollment. From, as you can see, 2302 and 217, we dropped a little bit in 2296 and 218, and in 219, we're 2252. Almost 1,951,631 students throughout the Commonwealth. This is just our attendance on our report card, we thought that we would put that up. This is the percentage of students who miss more than 10% of school in a typical 180-day school year. This represents the percentage of students who miss 18 more days of school. 9.4% in 219, 13.5% in 218, and 9.6% in 217. So, we really haven't too much fluctuation of those students, but we are less than the average of the Commonwealth, at 12.9%. The average of days that students miss is about 8.7 days compared to the Commonwealth at 9.6. We put this slide up, you can read these slides, all of our information on the district website is about a year and a half or two years behind on the Department of Education's website. However, being in school is extremely important for your academic success. So, we're doing not too bad. I can tell you this, 11 students walked out of the high school today with the flu. Whereas at the elementary school, they started going through it last week, I think they were up to about 12 at one point last week, and the intermediate school is just about getting, the Mitchell School is being hit right now. So, we'll have more numbers, and I'm sure that the flu will stay around for another couple of weeks. But, not too bad at this point. Kids like our schools, kids come to schools, our children like their teachers, they like our programming, they're here. Our graduation report, we stayed right around the same in 218, that's the latest data that we have, is at 94.6% in 218, and that's on a four-year graduation rate. We do not have the five-year graduation rate at this time, and we're waiting on that, and then we'll see the 219, it'll come out a little bit later. We don't have a lot of students that drop out of school, thank goodness. Our students want to stay here, they work with us, and we want to push them into post-secondary education, the Armed Forces, or a vocational. Dr. Williams?
Thank you. That image you're looking at right now is our accountability for the school district as part of the report card. They are now switching to a new model, which this is the second year of reporting, 2020 will be the third year of reporting, and it's part of the Every Student Succeeds Act, where they're looking at not only the academic achievements of students through standardized testing, but they're looking at the whole child. And as the superintendent referenced, they're looking at attendance rates, they're looking at discipline records, because they're trying to close achievement gaps between high-performing students and students that are at high risk. And certainly, what plays into students' academic success is their social-emotional success, whether they're accessing school on a regular basis, and that they're in class and attending to class and not dealing with behavior issues. So, this is our second year of reporting. The first year of reporting, we were at 45%, which was kind of a reset for all districts across the state, where everybody was kind of put in the middle, and then it's up to the district to make those improvements to go to the right as opposed to the left. So, we have moved to 49%, which gives us moderate progress, but certainly, still work that needs to be done. And one note that I want to make, as far as the data that's been shared, our data is only as good as our reporting, and that's one thing that we've really are trying to work on, improving on, especially as we're reporting attendance on a daily basis, reporting discipline on a daily basis, and reporting of teacher licensure. There was one slide there that I believe said 100 out of 154 teachers a license. We are actually higher than that, I'm glad to report, but we need to be extra careful about how we're reporting the courses that we're running and the license of the teacher matched up to that course. Once we submit our information to the state, they do come back with areas of correction, however, they don't allow us to correct. It's almost putting us on notice for next year, be aware that this teacher was flagged as teaching out of their licensed area. And it's not that they are doing that, it's just the way the course was labeled and how we match that up in our state reporting. And the same thing with attendance records as well. We have a day, if there's a substitute in a classroom and attendance is not taken every class throughout that day, that will show up in our reporting, because the information in School Brains is what goes directly to the state, it's not us manually sending them information. So, it's super important that we get very vigilant about how we're reporting and making sure that's accurate, because that's what's being reflected in our accountability. But with that said, we still do, you know, have areas of focus where we want to keep seeing our progress go up from the 49%. So, this next slide just represents where our focus was for funding for this current school year. Up in the top corner, Curriculum Instruction, you'll see in a later slide that we do have a curriculum review cycle. It's on a six-year rotation with all the content areas being represented. We moved to that model about three years ago, three or four years ago, because we want to make sure that we're focusing our efforts and attention on making sure that we have aligned courses and that we're funding those courses with the resources and materials. In years past, we were sort of just giving a little bit of a Band-Aid to each and not really supporting one specific content area to the fullest extent. So, we went with the rotation, we were a little strategic in how we developed that in the sense that we wanted to be mindful of some courses that'll be more costly, like ELA, math, science, more so than wellness and social studies and the fine arts. So, we try to stagger them so that we don't have consecutive years of high cost. We also went on the six-year rotation, because a lot of the licensing that we have is six-year contracts, so it makes sense. So, with this year, we were, we had to be a little bit more strategic, because the health and physical education standards, which were supposed to be complete for this school year, are still not in their final form at the state level, so we didn't want to finalize all of our funding until we knew what the standards were and could make sure that we were accounting for all resources needed. So, we jumped ahead to social studies, which was supposed to be the main focus this year. We did a little bit of funding for that last year, so that we could reserve some additional money for PE and wellness at the end of this year. So, about $56,000 was spent combined with, or $50,000 combined, social studies and PE, knowing that we still need to fill in some gaps for PE and wellness this year and finish off our social studies. And then, science, we spent some money on some replacement equipment at the junior/senior high school in the area of science. On the opposite side of that is the professional development. As I've mentioned to you before, we started a professional development academy, and the academy is made up of teachers and administrators from all three buildings. We meet on a monthly basis to not only plan the district professional development, but the oversight of all the professional development that teachers and staff members are interested in attending. So, about $59,000, that's been spent, ready math training. Two years ago, we purchased a new program, we gave the teachers a year to kind of get to know the program a little bit more, and now we're investing in some follow-up training, just as they're ready to absorb new things within the resources. Our Inclusive Practices Academy, I've talked a lot about universal design for learning and the fact that we have about 25 staff members in the district that have been involved in training and now bringing that training back to the district for staff. As part of that, we've started book clubs. We have four book clubs running for staff members that our own staff members are taking advantage of, as well as offering it online for cost for people from other districts to take advantage of, and the cost that's associated really just helps us to purchase books for our own staff members, so that they don't incur that cost. And then, the 175 workshops are workshops that teachers have been interested in going to outside the district, and that's the running tally about now of how many people. That's not 175-plus workshops, it's how many people have taken advantage of workshops over the course of the year, and a later slide shows you examples of the different professional development workshop offerings that they have attended. Down in the bottom corner of new hires, certainly, with every year, we have replacements that need to be done for retirements and resignations, and so all of those positions have been filled. We don't have any positions outstanding at this time. As far as nursing, we have three school buildings with three full-time nurses. We have a lead nurse in the district as well, and the lead nurse, obviously, her primary responsibility is the oversight of all three buildings, but more importantly, is making sure that we're in compliance with all of our medication delegations, our programming, and looking to expand our offerings for not only our staff, but for our students. And we were finding that Amy Berendretta, our lead nurse, was spending almost all of her time filling in if a nurse was out, or helping a nurse with the overflow of students that were coming to the nurse's office. And we really weren't able to use her in the capacity that she was meant for, and that was to expand what we offer for services to our students. So, we have hired an additional nurse, which is our Florida nurse, Karen Hart, and she's available to be in the district every day to help support in the buildings. The overflow of students, the increase in students with the significance of their medical needs, to fill in for a nurse, as you know, to bring in a substitute who's unfamiliar with a school building or a student's needs makes it a little bit more challenging, so to have an in-district floating nurse who is aware of all the students, the high significant needs, just makes it that much more seamless. And to make sure that our screenings are done in a timely manner. Not only do we have our typical heights and weights, we also now have expert screening, and we're doing break free from depression as well. So, the nurses are not only responsible for medical needs of students, but certainly, we see an increase of the social-emotional needs that students have as well. So, it's great that we've been able to increase our staff, so that we can focus on making sure the focus for students is on their academics and not worried about their health, knowing that they have professionals in the building to monitor them. And then, adjustment and social workers, and we've talked about this with the school committee as well, it was great that we have an opportunity to partner with Collaborative for interns who are ready to reach the master level of counseling. And so, obviously, a cost savings for us by partnering, that we're not paying the full salary of these interns, but certainly, people who are licensed social workers now looking to get further in their degrees, and we have them working in the district this year, and I know the superintendent has some statistics on some of the crisis management that they've done for us in the district. And lastly, on this, just under the other category, we have a data team in the district, and the data team meets on a regular basis throughout the year to talk about the data that we gather from students and how we use that data to make decisions about where we need to focus our efforts and attention. And I wanted to bring this to the meeting this evening, because Panorama is a new program that we've brought on this year in the district, and we spent $10,000 for it. It really helps us to bring all our data to one point. A lot of times in the school buildings, when they're talking about challenging situations with students, they've got data on academics, they've got data on discipline, they've got data on social-emotional wellness, they've got data on absenteeism. And we were looking at School Brains, and DIBELS, and MCAS, and MAP, and a lot was getting lost in us really focusing our attention on talking about students and how we're going to help them to improve. Panorama is a platform where all that information comes through, that we can look at a student in one screenshot, and we can see how they're doing academically, how they're doing social-emotionally, and that's surveys that we do with the students, and how they're doing from a disciplinary standpoint and an attendance standpoint. And it really gives us a full picture, that if a student is struggling academically, we can see are there other factors contributing to that. And it also will allow us to see how a student is trending. Maybe a student was, you know, got off to a poor start, and it will start to show trends upward, or a student comes in, the year starts off well, and they start to have a downward trend. And it catches them before they get to the point where they're in that high-risk situation. So, it can be seen at any point in time, it can be pulled up, and it really has helped the buildings to focus their effort and attention on looking at all aspects of a student, as opposed to just looking at one data point.
I thought we ran out of batteries, John. So, we have some new accomplishments that we're looking forward to last year and then bringing into this year. We opened up a SPED Reserve Fund in the town. Last year, they put, we had a $6,000 leftover in our budget, we put that in our SPED Reserve Fund. This year, we are looking at a potential increase of $100,000 to be put in. I've talked to Mr. Noble, the Town Administrator. The town understands that the out-of-district placement and the special education, out-of-district placements, the cost of the IEP, of a student with an IEP, and some of the resources that we need to have in place for that is where you're going to see some increase in our budget from last year to this year. We have spoken to the town, and that is someplace that he believes very strongly in, into helping, and he hopes to put $100,000 in for us into that potential increase. Our MSBA projects, our Central School Boiler Project will be, is on the last part of the commissioning. There's 21 points on that, there are 18 today, there's three more to go, because we are waiting for the cap to get onto the chimney, and the commissioning agent comes out every couple of weeks and commissions a little bit more, but we have come in under budget, so that was a great savings to the town, but that is, it's completed, it's fully functioning, it's just a few extra bells and whistles at the boiler project at the Central School. We've been approved at the MSBA for another project at the Central School roof for FY21. We are in the final queue of that. Mr. Shea and Mr. Kylie have gone to a few meetings on that, we've just got the final report on that, we are just waiting to hear from the MSBA to get the final paperwork for the, so that we can bring it to town meetings, so that people can, Mr. Noble and myself can work on getting that roof to be repaired over at the Central School. The Mitchell School, we've just finished the security system upgrade. Teachers and staff at the Mitchell School will receive their FOBs, the doors will be on FOBs now to get in and out of the building. We also have new cameras at the Mitchell School, and that was all a system upgrade, and they're working extremely well. Robotics, we have the VEX kits here at the high school, the junior/senior high school, and we have the steam labs at the Mitchell School, and the steam labs will be coming out to the junior/senior high school and to the Central School, and there's going to be some carts that'll be coming out, that Tori Cameron is helping us put together with Aaron Fisher, that are coming out sooner than later, and I want to thank prior to that happening, to the PTO and PTAs that we have in the district that will be helping supporting those lab carts. And we have flexible seating. Not only flexible seating in the classroom, that we put a lot in at Central School, there's some flexible seating at the Mitchell School, but we also have just seating here at the junior/senior high school. We've got some tabletops in the cafeteria, the kids seem to, they like that, sort of like seating, as if they were out at a venue, or, you know, Subway, or Pizza Hut, or something like that, and then we have some long tables in there. It gives kids an opportunity to have different seating in the cafeteria and to be part of, be part of the group. Again, Dr. Williams talked about the curriculum review cycle, 2021, we, this year, they're implementing the social studies, the pilot and purchase of, or piloting ELA, and then they'll do the needs assessment for art, music, and tech, but Dr. Williams did explain that we're still looking at the wellness, getting that into implementation, and it's coming. It's, you know, we're sort of at the frameworks of DESI at this point. These are all the professional development offerings. So, now we start to get into what everybody wants to know, and how much money it's going to cost, and why are we increasing the budget, and where's the money coming from, and how are we going to get there, and who's going to get supported, and where are the needs, who wants, where are the needs, what's the commitment, where are the resources going? FY20 increase, what are we going to do with it, and why? Well, we've had an increase in out-of-district placement of students. We have students that we cannot support in our classrooms here in East Bridgewater. These are students with significant needs. We want to enhance support for social and emotional with additional adjustment counselors and nurses. We want to continue to maintain and upgrade technology for both students and teachers. We need to support the NIASC Accreditation Five-Year Success Plan. We are going to be looking for putting in a security guard at the junior/senior high school, a Mitchell School Behavior Specialist, and an ESL teacher. We have students from different countries, with different languages, that need supports, and we want to support them, and we need to support them. They need to feel welcomed, and we need to have a teacher, and I think we're going to be at 1.5, we have a full-time ESL teacher in, and it looks like it'll be a 0.5. And increased academic positions. Right now, we're waiting for some finalization from the junior/senior high school, but you're going to see Mitchell School and Central School coming up. An FY21 increase for what and for why? In the district, for the year, up till today, we've had 8,322 visits in the district to the nurse. We have administered 2,798 med visits, that's on a daily basis. Those are on meds that students need, that we, that our nurses administer to students, that are sent in by parents. That is a year. The North River Collaborative Social Work Program, that we are working with a social worker, this is one of the social workers. Since she has been here, she's had 19 referrals. Her number-one referral is on behavior management. She's had scheduled 69 visits, those are scheduled, those are set up by guidance offices, those are scheduled up by an assistant principal or a teacher. But most importantly, we have 54 crises. These are students that have unscheduled, these are students that were not known, these are students that come up on a daily basis, that there's something wrong socially, emotionally, that they need supports and a need for. With all of that, she's done a terrific job of getting back to the staff with consultations. She's had 67 consultations. We are keeping the data to make sure that as we move forward in the district, where our needs and where the supports belong. The North River Collaborative, this program has paid dividends for us. The number-one, the number-one referral is for behavior management. We're looking at the different ways to adjust what we do on that, but we also have scheduled 69 scheduled visits to one social worker intern. But on the other side, we had 54 crises. This is only at the junior/senior high school. I did not pull the data from Central or Mitchell at this time. I just wanted to show you, this is across the district, but this is one young social worker, and these are things that we're dealing with, teachers are dealing with on a daily So, where are we going tomorrow? Our salary increases at $18,178,122, those are with some assumptions. Our non- Our non-salary, there is an increase, as you can see, over $200,000, a little bit more than that from last year, and that is due to special education increase in costs. The new positions, you'll see an asterisk of $292,000. And the asterisk is to be funded with school revolving funds and that's totally up to the school committee if you allow me to use a one-time fund of using school choice money. And you're going to see those positions in a moment. So school budget comes up to $21,794,223. Our busing, we had a new five-year contract, $924,300. We're in a five-year contract. That is not going to move. And we have a total of $22,718,523. The changes, the salary change, this is everybody in the district, is $478,518. Non-salary is about $143,810. The new positions at $292,000. Reminder, that's an asterisk, that's, I'm asking for revolving school funds. School budget at $914,328. That's what we'll be asking for, to certify for the town. Regular busing $11,700, that's the increase, and total of $926,028. The new positions. We have not, we don't have the census of the kindergarten in. We'll get that in a few, another month or so. So right now we have seven kindergarten teachers, seven first-grade teachers, eight second-grade teachers. Right now, we've had some increase in first-grade students. Third grade needs a special education teacher. We're not sure what our census will be in kindergarten. This year we were at 147. The second grade is at 174. The first grade is at 157. And this year things believe at 147. Central school is busting. Right now we're in pre-K signups. We are loaded over there right now. We have 99 students scheduled for the first time that we have all programs scheduled. That is a full five-day, full three-days, two, two, two days and three and one half-day program. Is it three, two full-day, half-days at this time? We're moving it around because we want to make sure that we are fitting the needs of our community. This morning I met with Kate Byrne, our principal. We're calling all parents right now because we have a second sheet of students that want to come in. That's how big our pre-K is at this point, that want to come to school. We have another full sheet. We are calling. We are offering different opportunities. We possibly will open up another five-day, full-day program. We may open up a four-day, full-day program. Or we'll open up two, three-day, full-day programs. Those are tuition-based programs. You say, why do I bring that up? I want people to know that we are trying everything we can to get as many preschoolers in as possible. The more intervention and the more socialization that we can do, that we can have for our three-and-a-half and four-year-old students before they arrive at five, five years old, it just does a world of difference as they enter great kindergarten. However, not everybody can afford and not everybody would like to have their child here five days a week, all day. It's a long day for a three-and-a-half. It's a long day for a four-year-old to come in. So they are looking at that. If you do have a preschool student and you're watching this evening, please, Mrs. Harvey's calling tomorrow. She started calling today. She's calling tomorrow. We are trying to get these numbers situated so that you'll have a plan for next year for your child. Grade three, special education, we need another teacher. Grade five, we need a teacher. Junior, senior high school, math, science, due to the fact of the courses that are being offered, we're waiting to hear from the high school principal and we're waiting to hear on the schedule and the students that are being, that are taking the courses. Adjustment counselor two and a nurse at one. FY21 budget assumptions is that increased support for social, emotional needs. Number two, special education out-of-district needs. We're trying to maintain current class sizes. We're trying to meet, we will meet contractual obligations. And we are still in a teacher collective bargaining agreement currently in mediation. These, that is up in the air at this time. That's what, it is what it is. I'm trying, we're working together. We're trying to get this done so that everybody can, can feel good about going into next year. The out-of-district costs, we do not have any, we cannot tell anybody what we're going to pay to send our child out of district. They tell us and they could go from, John, we had one at $140,000 out of district to $272,000 out of district. So they vary. And right now, we're waiting on one, find out what the payment will be. Chapter 70 funding, this is what, this is what we received last week from the governor's We were increased approximately $266,000 to our chapter 70 budget. The chapter 70 budget goes directly to the town administrator and then the town administrator works with us on developing a plan and what we will receive. Any monies that come in from the Student Opportunities Act, there is a long form, they're calling it, and those are for the urban districts that receive most of the allocation from the Student Opportunity Acts. It's going to the big five, New Bedford, Fall River, Brockton, Springfield, and Worcester. They're your big, they're your big five in the Commonwealth. They will receive the majority of that money. And then some districts who will receive some of that Student Opportunity Act money with the increases in chapter 70, we will do a short form because we must pinpoint what we will do with that money, where that money will be allocated for needs. So we just don't get a windfall of money from the state or the town without having a plan. And that's what we do as a school committee and central office together. And we're thinking ahead. We're recognizing the needs of our students and staff. If I could have a social worker for our students and a social worker, or someone to talk to for staff, I think is needed. We all need a break once in a while and we always need someone to listen to. There is a need for it. We're going to be doing a feasibility study for the central school. We put a million dollars in, close to a million last year on a boiler project, putting close to a million dollars on the roof and windows. The building is antiquated. We need to look at this building. Once we start messing with the windows, I am sure that we are going to open up a can of worms. It is old. It needs help. It needs support. And when I talk about pre-K and we're already up to 99, and we usually see another 60 to 70 students that come in who didn't go to preschool and kindergarten, you're looking at maintaining enrollment between 150 and 170. If we have that type of enrollment coming in, we need to upgrade that building. And we are, I, the town administrator has pushed me to really look at this, to talk with you about this, to discuss this feasibility study and to get into that building and start looking at it. And when I say special needs programming, Gordon, I see that you went to the dentist today. John Phelan is at, went to the dentist today. He called me late afternoon and said he had to go. He couldn't, he couldn't handle it anymore and he was going directly to the dentist. We're trying to start a transition program for students who are graduating out but need extra support and that would be here from to the age 22. We do not offer a transitional program here. We go to our collaboratives for the transition. We would like to have those students with us if we can hold on to them and offer them a skill-based training transitional program. We'd like to do it here. So we are looking at that and that's becoming a needs program. We have two students in the program now in the different collaboratives. We have two more on their way into that, that 19, 20-year-old. We're student-centered because it's the right thing to do. And when people ask me, what do you mean by student-centered or teacher-focused? We focus on instruction. We focus on our teachers' needs and we focus on what our teachers need for support. But we also need to center on our students. What do our, what do our kids need? What is the skill set that they need? What are their emotional needs? What supports do we need to offer our students? I can't go into all of the students at risks and I can't tell you exactly what goes on, but I can tell you the emotional needs, the social and emotional needs of our community is growing. Our students need our support. They need our help. That's what we do. Number one comes academics. We want our children to be thriving when it comes to academics, to their skills. We want them to be thriving in socialization. We want them to be good communicators, effective thinkers. We want all of that. But if they don't feel emotionally sound, if they don't feel strong enough to communicate, if they don't have the skill base or the supports of us helping them, then they, they will not thrive. They will stop. Our job is to support kids. We're a public facility. We're public education. That's what we're here for. At some point, I don't know when that'll be, the town administrator has mentioned it to me, we've talked about it, at some point, possible override, we really need to look at the needs of these kids. We cannot continue to just get by. We cannot continue to do the needs assessment. We need to go out and beyond. They're our kids. It's our community. It's our school district. We try very hard to do the right thing. We try very hard to support our teachers. We try very hard to support our students. But it's difficult if we're strong and we don't have the support of the resources that are needed for kids. The PowerPoint will go up tomorrow or this evening after the school committee has seen it. They have a week to review it, to ask questions, to come back. We're always in our office. These, these packets are in our office. Anybody can come and take a look, ask questions. John Shea is available at any time for questioning. I am available for questioning. When it comes to the money, that's where you would go to. If you want to talk about programming, curriculum needs, the professional development, in those areas, Dr. Williams is always available for a conversation. Our school report card, the report cards are on the Department of Education at the Mass website. ClearGov, we try to update that as much as we can. That's on our website. You can go there. You can see our projects. You can see some pictures of our project. You can see what our per pupil expenditure is. You can see how much money we put into salaries. You can see how much money we're putting into special education. It's all up on ClearGov. And it is truly great to be a Viking. I'm asking for a certification of $21,794,223 with a caveat of the new positions that I have included this evening come from a revolving account. It would be a one-time expense. We will not, I will not, I will not bring us forward into this without making it a one-time expense. Next year would be put into the regular budget, just very much like we did kindergarten once we, we funded it that first year. The town brought it in on that second year. I have talked to Mr. Noble. We are working on that. But we need these positions. These are one-time funds. I think that people think that the revolving account is something that I can use, something the school community, committee can put in and just say, let's use this, let's use this. It can't be done like that. But we can use this money to get these positions that is much needed to support students and their needs. School choice, I do not, when I bring in school choice students, Dr. Williams and I do not know, we have the students file, but we do not, we are not prejudiced on where the child is from, the color of the skin, the economics of the child, or if they have an IEP or they do not. We cannot be prejudiced against any of those factors. And we have a lot of school choice. We have 36 positions. We can't open up anymore because our classroom sizes are full. We have people knocking at the door to stay in East Bridgewater. We have people knocking at the door to come in on school choice. It's a great way to one-time fund the school adjustment counselors, social work, a nurse, possibly another nurse, to get that math, science teacher, if that is what it calls We're going to do the best that we can, but this is what we are asking for, the certification for next week. See, not, not this evening, but if there's any, any questions or discussions or anybody has any questions from myself, Dr. Williams, or John Shea is here, if anybody wants to ask any intricate questions on how chapter 70, how they come up with that figure, John would probably try to tell you how to, he figures that they get it, but I don't think anybody really knows the, the real formula on the whole chapter 70. But if there's any questions, I'm, I'm here to answer them. It's easy. Do you want to go back up on stage? I mean, unless the school committee has any questions. Gordon? No. No. We hit the adjustment counselors and social workers. John, is there anything that I missed that you wanted to just say that I missed, just talking about going forward with the budget? Yeah. Mr. Shea, Dr. Williams and myself, the next month is very grueling for us and especially for John as he, as he winds down and grinds this, the budget for us. But I can tell you this, we do fight. We argue about this. You know, Dr. Williams wants what she wants to support the teachers and professional development, curriculum instruction, and the needs for the classroom. The principals will join Dr. Williams's force and push us as far as we can go. John will then pick up and try to push us back and try to push that area back. He'll try to bring in the needs of technology. Try to bring in the needs of the security guard. You might have saw the security guard. We're looking about paying with that, we hope maybe a revolving account, maybe a grant with that. We, this building is open at night till all hours of the night and so is the Mitchell School. We have after-school programming there. We have rec basketball there, rec programs at the other buildings. Central School, we don't have as many students there at night. However, we do have high school students here, junior, senior high school students at this building. This building is, is used a lot. People coming in from the community use the track. We have sporting events. We have driver's ed. We have lots of things going on. We are very concerned with having young men and women in the building. We're concerned with people getting into the building that may not have greatest intentions of being in the building. We need to have some security inside the building after the, Mr. Hubert goes home at that level, the principals go home and the teachers are out of the building. We can only lock so many ways up. Someone could get in and hide. We're very safety, we are looking at safety of the buildings, but we also are looking at making sure that students are safe at all times and the community is safe when they come in to use the building. And if we had someone walking around, we could do that. Right now what we're finding is that on a weekend, our custodial staff may be on the third floor, someone's trying to get in, the custodial staff comes down, lets them in if they're here for practice or here for something else or they're waiting. them in if they're here for practice or here for something else, or they're waiting for the bus for a track meet that's up in Boston. So the door gets opened, then the custodian goes back up. Custodian's missing out on some time to get some things done. So we, we needed to adjust and do some things on both sides of that. So that's, that's why you see the security. We did have, just to give you an example, we had a student here a couple of weeks ago that was in the building alone. We had a male custodian on duty with one female student. He stayed in, in view of the cameras. Mr. Shea happened to be here working on this. He went in and got Mr. Shea. We alerted the parents. Parents came by, picked up the student. It's scary. It's something that we don't want to happen because we're not sure if the student was misinformed about an activity going on here, or, or whatever the case may be. But we also have custodians walking around, and they don't know all the students' names. They don't know everybody. You know, they're here, they're doing their job. So that's one of the, that's one of the risks that we do take.
Thank you.
All yours.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone for coming this evening. I'm going to ask one last time, so no one has any questions?
I'm assuming there'll be time for questions next week as well, once we have time to process this and think about it.
Correct.
Absolutely.
So the principals were not here this evening because they're, we've got a couple of things going on this week. Timmy would know. I'm going on elementary later, maybe what was at this time. They will be here next week. They're going to sit, I'd ask them to just come right in and pull up their seats so they can sit with you so you can ask any clarifying questions that you'd like to ask about their individual buildings, individual resources that they're looking for, their needs and supports that they need at their buildings, and are we doing that? Dr. Williams, we'll discuss that with them this week, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you need anything, and you want a specific question, I do ask that maybe you reach out to Dr. Williams so she can talk to the principals and make sure that we have what you're looking for before we get there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to Superintendent Legault and Dr. Williams for the presentation. We appreciate it. And, oh, thank you for-
Nice job, John.
Last but not least, we never forget you, John Shea. You do an excellent job with our numbers and putting this budget together. Thank you. Don't want to forget you ever. Thank you to everyone for coming, and at this time, I would take a motion to adjourn this public hearing.
Please.
Moved by Trista, second by-
Second.
Teresa? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and have a good night, everyone.